Oh, okay.
Okay.
So who are you? Sir, who are you?
I'm with Priority Waste.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to pass my card on just because we're opening this, so I wanted to make sure that if you need a card anywhere.
Uh, you could sit one right up there on the podium. All right, I appreciate you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. Okay. I got you. Yep. Yep. I got it. I got you. Yep, I got it. Yep. Yes, you did. Yeah, you did. Yeah. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Highland Park City Council in person. Regular meeting scheduled for today, Monday, June 2nd, 2025 at 7:00 P. M. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Ashafi.
Present.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Manica. Council Proton Robinson. Council President Thomas.
Here, thank you very much. Uh, council, you have had an opportunity to view tonight's agenda. At this point, the chair would turn the floor over to members of council.
Before we start, I have a question for Attorney for Andy.
Yes, ma'am.
At the last council meeting, Attorney Bosick said that we are, we were not operating under Robert's rule of order.
Hmm.
So can you tell me what rules of order we are operating on? We don't have bylaws and we didn't vote on any doing any. So what are we operating on?
We're under home rules, madam. Uh, we're under the home rules, uh, Madam Proton.
So you don't have to vote on home rules?
Proud of the open. No, ma'am. So I, at, at, if you recall, let's go back to the very beginning. So you, I'm answering your question. We have home rules. If you recall, our very first meeting, my very first motion was to propose getting parliamentary support because we are still operating, we are still operating. The answer to your question is being delivered to you now. We're still operating under the rules established by two councils ago. Here we are. Here we are.
Council President.
No, so we're on the agenda. So this is item three, approval of the agenda. So, uh, the chair will entertain a motion to, no, no, ma'am. At the, at the agenda, ma'am, at which, at the agenda, ma'am. Attorney bodies, hold on a second. Madam Proton, Madam Proton. Uh, to, to his point, he, he. No, ma'am. I'll wait for you. I'll wait for you. You get your question answered. I will wait for you. Your, the resolution that you provided to us could be added to the agenda under item three, which we're talking about right now. The question from the chair that was posed to council is council, you have received the agenda. At this point, the chair will entertain a motion on the agenda, either to accept it or to amend it. I, I believe I have a resolution in front of me that you provided that at this point, that resolution can be added to the agenda. So at this point, again, it's item three, the approval of the agenda. The chair will entertain a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve with amendments.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add, uh, council, uh, pro temps, um, um, resolution, uh, to the agenda.
Do we have support? So we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashafi to accept tonight's agenda as it stands with one minor addition. That will be the addition of the resolution provided to us by council pro temp this evening. Madam Proton, would you please provide, would you read that resolution?
Resolution to add Martha G. Scott Boulevard as a secondary name for Rhode Island Street to honor the contributions of the Honorable Martha G. Scott to the community of Highland Park. We don't have a number on it yet. Whereas the city of Highland Park, city council would like to formally recognize the contributions of the Honorable Commissioner Martha G. Scott to the city of Highland Park for over eighty years. And whereas the Honorable Commissioner Martha G. Scott began her political career as a precinct delegate for District Three in the city of Highland Park in nineteen seventy-two. She was appointed Wayne County Commissioner in nineteen seventy-seven, and whereas the Honorable Martha G. Scott was elected president of the city of Highland Park City Council in nineteen eighty-four. And in nineteen eighty-eight, became the mayor of the city of Highland Park. And whereas the Honorable Martha G. Scott was elected to representative in nineteen ninety-four, state representative in nineteen ninety-four, to the state senate in two thousand and a year in two thousand and ten, was elected Wayne County Commissioner, a position of leadership that she still holds. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Highland Park City Council now declares Rhode Island Street to now and forever be also known as Martha G. Scott Boulevard. Such an honor shall be memorized by the placement of the street sign indicating such a corner of Woodward Avenue and Rhode Island Street.
Okay, uh, we have questions, comments, concerns. We have a motion on the floor made by Councilman Ashafi, supported by Council Proton Robinson. Okay, so we have a second coming in from Councilwoman Manica. If I don't see any hands moving, so I'm gonna go ahead and take this as a roll call vote. If you go ahead and call the roll on the approval of the agenda with the amendment of act. One question, where would this go on the agenda? This down in council affairs?
No, honestly, I would just move it up to number seven. So it would be a bid opening five, city clerk six, city council seven, engineering eight, water nine.
Is that, that okay with you, Mr. Ashafi?
It is.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor made by Councilman Ashafi to approve tonight's agenda with the amendment of adding the resolutions to recognize, uh, the Honorable Martha G. Scott Boulevard, seconded by Councilwoman Manica. Would you please call the roll on approval of the agenda?
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes, to approve and amend.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes, to amendments.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, agenda has been approved. So now we move on to item four, that's the approval of proposed minutes for the in-person and virtual regular meeting on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. City Council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the proposed minutes.
In-person and virtual regular meeting, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second, questions, concerns, dissent? Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
Councilman Ashafi.
No.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson.
No.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, thank you very much. Motion carries. Uh, we might get out of here before the sun set tonight. Um, at this point, uh, this is where we turn the meeting over to allow the mayor to speak to council and also to address the community. Mayor, if you would, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, citizens. Good evening, council. Good evening, administration that's there. Uh, first, let me apologize for not being in person. I have another meeting that I'm, I'm actually simultaneously doing, uh, in Washington, D. C. Um, in, with Washington, D. C. Sorry. Um, I don't have much, but I do want to say congra, you know, I'm glad that this is being placed on the agenda, uh, for, uh, the Honorable Martha G. Scott. And so, uh, it's well deserved. She has worked diligently, uh, in the community, uh, for over fifty years or better in politics. And so, um, I would just say I'm glad that it was placed on the agenda. Second, on July twelfth, mark your calendars, we are having our annual city, um, wide rummage sale. This is the block club citywide rummage sale. Um, it will be held from eleven A. M. to four P. M. on California and Woodward. We've had this last year, and it was very well attended. We had over twenty-five citizens come out and, uh, get rid of some of their stuff out their houses. This is a way to eliminate, um, the clutter in your house and then still do a service by some people that might need some stuff that you have for a little bit of money. Uh, we've, last year, I remember a parent coming and there was, uh, school clothes and school uniforms that someone was getting rid of, and she was so pleased to be able to get five pair of pants for ten dollars. That's a great thing to help the community and the citizens in the community who need help. Also, we are still working on our, our cleanup, citywide cleanup. Right now, it's scheduled for June twenty-first. Uh, we are waiting to see if we can get dumpsters for the areas. Uh, we've reached out to Wayne County and we've reached out to, um, other entities, um, to help with that. So I'm looking to hear something back this week, and then you will have a flyer, watch your emails, watch your text messages. What we're doing this year is a little different. You're cleaning your area only, your, your house area, your neighbors, get your neighbors together. Hey, we coming out on June twenty-first. Everybody is cutting down bushes in the alley or cutting down. Those bushes are right behind your house, because most people don't know the little space that's between the alley and your garage or your fence. There's this little space. It actually belonged to you. So cut those bushes off of your fence, cut them, cut, cut all the weeds around there off, and, uh, so that when the, the city comes through the alley, they have just that space in the middle to cut down. So you have clear alleys. As most of you have seen, there is a lot of alleys that have been cleared, and they're working on more, uh, this year. So help us out by making sure that your fence and your, uh, garage area is clear of debris as well as any, um, any garbage you might have back there. If somebody is dumping in the alleys, I really need you to report it immediately. Again, reporting it on Facebook is not getting a person caught. If you see them, call the police department, and they can come and catch them in the act. And if they catch them in the act, there's other things and laws that apply where they could lose their, their, uh, wagon, whatever it is they're dumping from. So please do not wait. If you see something, say something, call the police desk, call whoever you need to call to get that done. Um, and, and I think that's all I have. Don't forget Coffee and Conversation is next Wednesday. Uh, not this week, but next week, I'm having a ten A. M. for adult citizens or the citizens, and then at five P. M. Just so you know, if you know any child who graduated from high school in Highland Park, this is the second year, and we're going to be at the Coffee and Conversation at five P. M. At the, uh, Justice Center, I, I give out the gifts every year to the scene. We've been doing this, um, uh, for five, five, maybe six years now, and, uh, that way that they can come and get their gifts. There'll be scholarship applications. There'll be communications about, uh, uh, how they can participate in the community, giving back, working, all of those kind of information, all of that kind of information will be given out. That's next Wednesday, June eleventh at five P. M. If you see one of those signs that says high school, because there's a lot of signs, but it might not be high school, knock on that person's door in your neighborhood and say the mayor is having a coffee and conversation just for your senior, so they can come out to the Justice Center. Um, I think that's all I have, and, uh, you guys have a good evening. I'm gonna jump back on this other meeting right quick.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Hmm.
Okay, we'll move on to, let me go ahead and set my timer up. So our agenda tonight is, is short, praise God. Um, we're opening bids for solid waste disposal services and for street sweeping. There's an application for a vending license, uh, from an L. L. C. for Italian Ice. There is a resolution to approve the revised comprehensive safety action plan, and end zone, I endorse, uh, Vision Zero, and there is a resolution requesting the authorization for the city, to prepare a vulnerability assessment for the Highland Park Water Treatment Plant, which many of you know is open. So those are the items that are on the agenda if someone wanted to speak to those. Otherwise, we will move directly into our bid opening. So move, I don't see anybody's moving. So we're gonna move on to item. For agenda items only. Is there a particular agenda item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go right ahead. Could you state your name, sir? One, just one second. I'll set the clock to two minutes. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, Robert Douglas Lodge Junior, President of the City of Highland Park East Grand and Brush Street Block Club.
I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead. Forgive me.
Good to see you, sir. Uh, my concerns are pertaining to, uh, number five B, the sweep, street sweeping services. My, uh, uh, question is, will the businesses on Oakland Avenue from Six Mile McNichols, also known as McNichols, to the Davidson Expressway be responsible to clean the streets for the excessive dirt, debris, and air pollution that they're causing and has been causing for quite some time? I personally think that because their businesses are causing this issue, that they should be responsible to clean that issue up and not the city of Highland Park. Uh, also, as I've been stating for several months now, my other concern is the lack of communication, transparency, and accountability. And so there's item seven and item eight. Uh, have the citizens of this city been informed of these forthcoming resolutions so that we will be aware of what is being asked of this council? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to, I don't see anybody else coming to the podium. Moving on to item five, this is a bid opening. So we have received bids from potential vendors. And this process is where we will be opening those bids, and a deputy clerk will be reading the bidding information to council. And we will either receive, well, we will receive those bids, and they will be forwarded to the administration. City Council, what is your pleasure on item five A, the solid waste disposal services bid opening? Chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the bid opening for solid waste disposal services.
Move to open the bids, move to open the bids.
Okay, I move to open the bids for solid waste disposal services. Do you want me to do them together or separate?
Yeah, do A and B separate.
Okay.
Support.
So as a motion to begin the bid opening process made by Councilwoman Manica, supported by Councilwoman Martin, again, this is just the process of opening the bids. Take a roll call vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please?
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ma- Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, at the conclusion of this, we need to make sure that we make a motion to forward these on to the administration. If you would be so kind, Madam Deputy Clerk.
One bid was received from Priority Four Five Zero 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 River Ridge Drive and Cl- Clinton Township. Again, one bid has been received from Priority Four Five Zero 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 River Ridge Drive in Clinton Township.
While we wait for her to open, that advertisement for bids, the city of Highland Park, Wayne County, Michigan, solid waste disposal services. Seal bids were received by May twenty-eighth at noon. And the seal, this is the posting from the advertisement, and the sealed bids will be open today, June second, at the city council meeting at seven P. M. So that is a prescribed course of action for what we're doing right now. The bids had to be in by May twenty-eighth, and per the advertisement, we should be opening and forwarding those to the administration today.
The contract says, it's for a three-year contract plus two one-year optional renewals. For the first year, cost per unit per week, thirteen dollars seventy-five cent. Cost for entire leaf season, eighteen dollars fifty cent. For the second year, cost per unit, cost per unit per week, fourteen dollars thirty cents. Cost for unit for entire leaf season, nineteen dollars and six cents. Contract third year, fourteen dollars eighty-seven cent for the cost per unit per week. Nineteen dollars sixty-three cent for the leaf season. And then for the optional year one, cost per unit per week, fifteen dollars forty-six cent. Leaf season, twenty dollars twenty-two cents. And for the second optional year, cost per unit per week, sixteen dollars eight cents. Leaf season, twenty dollars and eighty-three cents. That is it.
All right. What is your pleasure?
I got, um, I get the hourly rate, but there's gotta be a total, right?
So if, if, and I want to infer, because this is Mr. Burgess's wheelhouse, and I don't, let me just see if I missed, what this describes is the bid per unit of, of residential trash pickup. This is a price that is prescribed.
I get that, I get that, but what is that gonna cost us over the next five years? They're talking three years, then optional two years, so five years.
The answer to that question is a math problem. We have to establish the number of actual residents who are receiving trash. That's a, there's a number, and we'd have to multiply that number of, for standard trash, we have to multiply that number out through, uh, for leads as well. And I think that's what the administration will do, to have to crunch these numbers. So we might be ahead of ourselves. We're just receiving the bids now, and they would have to come back to us with a sum total, and I think that's not unreasonable, that when they come back to us with this bid to approve it, what that sum total is. I believe we've seen this before in our other resolutions where we approved the vendor services. They did have actual contract amounts. But again, we'd have to multiply that by the number of active units where they're gonna be removing trash. Um, and it's just a math equation. This is just for bid opening, though.
I know. It is open, we've opened the bid, we've got the number, you come up and tell us how many units we're servicing now. If he's asking us the unit count, you know, which routine, usually when you start over the contract and count the stuff.
I'll give you a couple minutes.
Would you mind saying your name for the record? Uh, my name is Brett Quiddiquid. I'm managing municipal relations for Priority Waste.
My colleague here had a question. Could you address it possibly?
And just so you know, I am stepping in for Paul Ruthenberg. He was unable to attend today just because of a conflicting schedule, so I will answer to the best of my ability based on what he has told me.
So right ahead, he had a direct question.
Uh, you've been with us before. When do we pay on the yearly, uh, basically what you before?
So that's something that I cannot answer to you, because I don't want to answer on behalf of Paul, who controls the account. Now, what I can tell you in terms of what I heard, you're asking about the resi, the residential unit count, that's something that we do want Highland Park to provide to us, because we can base it off of what we currently have, but for all we know, there's been, you know, a hundred people have moved in, a hundred people have moved out. That's something that we need to know, and that's something that you'd like to know, because you don't want us to charge you for a hundred people more, and we don't want to charge you for a hundred people less.
Okay, so to my point, you cannot provide that answer to my colleague's question.
I cannot.
Okay, so let's, let's go on where we have the bids. Counsel, what is your pleasure on, on this bid that we received?
Um, Madam Deputy Clerk, we only get one bid was turned in.
Do you mind if I add one more thing?
I do. So you can have a seat. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Um, counsel, what's your pleasure on what we do with this bid?
Was it just one?
It's just, it's just one.
Right, aren't we moving it to administration?
So that's, that's. I have a motion on the floor made by Councilman Ashafi to move to administration, supported by Councilwoman Martin. Questions, concerns, dissent? Madam Deputy Clerk, would you call for a vote on moving that to the administration?
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes, to move to administration.
Councilwoman Martin. Yes. Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, thank you very much. Can we get a motion to close that bid and move on to item five B?
I want to make a support.
We have a motion to close the bidding for solid waste disposal made by Councilman Ashafi, supported by Councilwoman Martin. Would you please call the roll?
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes, to close.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson. Council President Thomas.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item five B, city council, what's your pleasure on opening the bids for street sweeping services?
I want to make a motion to open the street sweeping services.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to open the bids for a street sweeping services made by Councilwoman Martin, seconded by Councilman Ashafi. Questions, concerns, or dissent? Madam Deputy Clerk, would you take the role on this, please?
Councilman Ashafi. Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson. Council President Thomas.
Yes, thank you so much, um, Madam Deputy Clerk, if you would.
We have no bids.
Thank you very much. Why, Chair will entertain a motion to close bidding.
I support.
Okay, we have a motion to close the bidding process for street sweeping services made by Councilman Ashafi, supported by Councilwoman Martin. Would you please call the roll?
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes, to close.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson. Council President Thomas.
Yes, thank you very much. Moving on to item six, under the city clerk, application for vending license for Roney L. L. C., the Little Jimmy's Italian Ice. Have this application in front of us, city council. What's your pleasure?
I don't know.
I'm sorry, sir. Would you please sit down? Would you please sit down, sir?
Council President.
Yes, sir.
Um, it may come to us in twenty twenty-three.
I don't recall.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Right.
So ladies and gentlemen, can we make a motion to get this gentleman on, uh, on the floor? So I had to have a gentleman sit down. Can we make a motion to decide on what we're gonna do with item six, and then I can call the gentleman back up to the podium?
So we're gonna make a motion to support with questions?
Yes, we have a motion on the floor to approve the application, uh, made by Councilwoman Martin. She has questions. Does she have support?
Motion to approve with questions.
She has a motion to approve with questions. Does she have support?
Are you seconding, Mr. Ashafi?
Support.
So have that motion on the floor to, to approve the application for the vending license made by Councilwoman Martin, supported by Councilman Ashafi. You had questions?
Yeah, I got questions.
I'm sorry, Ms. Martin, did, based on.
I just got one.
Just so, sir, would you please join us again? Forgive, I'm trying to keep structure, trying to keep structure. That's all.
Um, yeah, uh, because I'm like with Proton, you were here before. You're reapplying, um.
Well, that's what the clerk said. I had to come back.
But didn't we already give you a vendor license?
Yeah, but this, this gotta be a re.
Council President, may I? Council members, the license is only good for a year, so he has to renew every year, and so it comes before you guys every year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, no more questions.
Mr. Ashafi, do you have a question also?
Yeah, yeah. So my question is, I, I mean, um, no other permits come before this council, uh, for approval with the exception of parades. I, I find it, I find, I find it interesting that a business license is before it. I thought that was exclusively the privy of the clerk.
No, vending, the ordinance states that vending licenses have to come before council.
I was gonna say, I thought vending, uh, business and vending are different.
Yes.
Oh, they are. Okay.
Yes, vending is dis- different from a business license.
Right.
Okay.
Additional questions, concerns, or?
I said yes the last time. I don't see the problem this time. I said yes the last time, I don't see the problem this time.
All right then, I will go ahead and take the role on, so this is item six, the approval of the application for a vending license for Roney LLC, Little Jimmy's Italian Ice. Would you call the roll on item six, please?
Councilman.
Councilwoman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin? Yes. Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Now we're down to item seven. We're at item seven, that is the resolution to add Martha G. Scott Boulevard as a secondary name for Rhode Island Street to honor the contributions of the Honorable Martha G. Scott to the community of Highland Park.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Shafi to approve, support is made by Councilwoman Martin. I don't see no hands, because we don't have no.
Yes, you do.
I was about to say, we ain't got no concerns, courses, uh, I'm ready to just go. Go for it, Ms. Manica.
Uh, I seconded the, the, the motion to put the resolution on the ballot. But I do want to.
On the agenda.
On the agenda, I'm sorry, on the agenda. But I do want to find out, or make sure that we check out later, because somewhere in there, I think someone else came, and they were asking, and we said.
Reverend Bishop Evans.
We said that you had to be deceased.
Uh, yeah.
And so.
We didn't tell him he need to be dead before we approved it, right?
Yes, I think we did.
It's kind of jacked up.
So, um, I don't know if we should hold off on this for a second, just to verify, because we did say that, I think even actually more than once. And the other question was given to me by resident, saying that we asked the residents, how did they feel about that on the street? Same thing with whoever else.
Council President?
Yep, before you go, before you make that comment, I will acknowledge you definitely, but I think, um, the enthusiasm behind the person that we're talking about may have, may have made me a little blind too. I'm trying to think about Wheeler's Way, and I believe that, uh, they went up and down the block to, to confer with the people on the block. And I'm certainly not opposed to it. Uh, I didn't have anything. Yeah, I don't have anything to do with the writing of this resolution, but it, it speaks to something that it echoes throughout the community. I don't think there would be a person on Rhode Island that would disagree with the sentiments that are in this document. But in truth, if we're gonna be consistent, we do have to recognize what Ms. Manica said. Now, I am of the mind that we go back and revisit the previous circumstances.
I second that.
Because I'm, I'm, I, I will have to, as I always do. Right, before you get your certification and mediation, you have to declare your biases. I am all in favor of, of this type of recognition for the contribution that has been made. And I am equally in favor of recognizing other people in the community that had an impact in the, the way that these individuals have. We still have individuals that we have acknowledged for street signs that the process is still ongoing. So I think, um, to your point, we might have to go back and open that, reopen that, so that we.
Be consistent.
Be consistent, absolutely.
Council President?
Yep.
Okay, so, so I am, I, I second that with you. I'm in strong support of it. I'm also in strong support of, of, of my good friend, uh, Bishop Evans, who has asked this council on several times for the same thing. I also love and respect, this is Martha G. Scott, I have no problem with that as well. I say that we set the precedent here and let it move forward from that point on.
So it sounds like the ordinance needs to be.
Right.
Right, so well, this is under the purview.
The ordinance needs to be changed?
No, no, so this is under, so these type of acknowledgements, these are the type of things, by resolution, City Council can act as a body to make these type of recommendations. We're not changing the, the, um, actual name of the street. What we're doing is we're adding the, the honorary name to the street, and it's reflected in a placard on the, on that particular block. It, we, you can see a representation of it on other streets within the city of Highland Park. And that is our purview.
Yep.
To acknowledge that person, the person that we're honoring, just like Wheeler's Way recognizes the Wheeler family and their contribution to the city. It is an addition to the current signage as an honorary, I mean, as an honorarium to that, that particular person. It doesn't change.
Where is the resolution for, um, Bishop Evans?
We'd have to find that in our own minutes, where we will be responsible. So you know what, so then let's, let's, let's do this, then, then we should go, if, as Ms. Manica said, if. Because I'm in, in favor of, again, I didn't have anything to do with the writing of this resolution, but I'm in support of it. So what that would mean is that we would have to, if we want to keep an even hand, we would have, we would have to be the initiative of the people sitting here to go back and find that in order to, as Mr. Shafi said, make the situation right. So I mean, that's, that's incumbent upon the person who wants to take that action. That's who it's been, we, the five of us are receive our, our information the same. My, my job is to chair the meeting and to communicate between, that's it, to communicate, we equally have the responsibility. So it will be incumbent upon the person who wanted to move that forward.
So Council President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, uh, again, as, as I was saying, um, yeah, Bishop Evans, uh, he needs to be recognized. And everyone else, I, I feel like if we set the precedent here now, we can move forward with no other problems. The same way that we set the precedent for selling lots across the street. Okay, yeah, exactly.
There's never been one that.
Uh, uh, the same way, uh, the same way that we set the precedent for, for adjacent lots, now including across the alley from the park.
I agree, so let's do that. Let us, whoever it was that, um, prepared this resolution for Council Proton.
Yeah, I get what Bishop Evans.
Yep, let's do that, so.
Sounds like the resolution needs to either be created.
It, it's somewhat, one of you is gonna write it, right, one of you is going to write it.
I'll take care of it.
Okay, got it, okay, so let's move on to the vote for item seven, that is the resolution to add Martha G. Scott Boulevard as a secondary name for Rhode Island Street to honor the contributions of the Honorable Martha G. Scott to the community of Highland Park. Would you please call the roll on item seven?
Councilwoman Shafi?
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries, thank you very much, now moving on to item eight.
First, congratulations to the Honorable Commissioner. And then I want to also make note that, once you write that resolution, we need to think about an ordinance or something, because then now where everybody, I heard you, but, so that we won't just have everybody wanting a street named after them. You have to have some qualif, you only have qualifications, what that would be. Of course, Mark, Miss, or Commissioner Scott has well over enough. That's a no doubt, no question, no brainer. But that doesn't mean everybody does. And so we just want to be careful what, what we're setting the precedents to.
I just said that, I just said it's not like we're agreeing that ordinance needs to be changed.
To, 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 I, again, we'd have to, I have not looked at specific ordinance when it comes to street naming. I have not, but, and I don't have a problem confessing this. This is one of the few perks of being an elected official, that you have an opportunity to bestow accommodations on people who feel like they deserve it. We are the, the five of us here, we got this four years to go and do things that we think are beneficial in the community, you know, we'll, we'll stand on our own actions. And if we decided the five of us, between now and the end of our term, that we really wanted to go through and name some of the streets after the pillars of the community, we don't know, again, we don't know what the future is gonna hold. We don't know if the next council will even be interested in doing this thing. Not to say that they wouldn't be, but we don't know. We just know if this is something that we're passionate about. This is one of the few perks, if you call it that, the few privileges that an elected official has. And that is to go through and make these type of recognitions, because this is, this is our time to do so. So I thank you all for that, we're gonna move on to item eight, under engineering, yes, sir.
I got one thing to say, uh, um, Ms. Manica, anybody that's lived here in the city of Highland Park who doesn't know Martha G. Scott, they gotta be living underneath this rock.
Yeah, that wasn't a question, that, that.
Okay, so let's, let's go on and, um, let's move on. To item eight, under engineering, that's the resolution to approve the revised comprehensive safety action plan and endorse Vision Zero. This is a show it to the audience, this is the book that we're talking about, we are approving the revisions.
Council President?
Yes.
Motion to, uh, motion to table, I need a little bit more time with this, I'm sorry, I gotta have more time with this.
Okay. Second.
Yeah, I need more time with this, I'm sorry.
So we're, there's a motion on the floor to table item eight, under engineering. This falls under, who's this, Mr. Burgess? Is there, is there, is there a timeline that we're up against?
Next council meeting.
No, I'm saying, is there a timeline, you're up against? Before July first?
Okay.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So here's my question, question.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Manica.
It says, resolution to approve the revised, then we see one prior to this.
Exactly.
Yes.
Thank you.
Please, sir.
Yeah, please.
Uh, we've seen this document before.
Yes, we have.
And it's just the updates, I'm assuming it's updates for 2025. Go right ahead, sir.
But we didn't see the previous one, Council President, that's why we asked.
So, so just a quick, some history here. So what I have right here is the original report that was sent to this council in September of 2024. We came on September third, we did a workshop on September third, 2024. It was approved by council on September sixteenth, okay? What happened? What's, excuse me? Two, two, yeah, it's been, it's been a minute, so in between then and now, we received some additional comments from council, roundabouts, Ms. Martin. Um, there are multiple street si, uh, speed, uh, signs missing, traffic calming. And then we had a survey, okay, that we pushed out to the residents in April. So we did that, we had sixty-two responses, we had nine the first time we did it in the fall of last year. Hold on, we had fifty-two additional. Okay, so what's here?
This is your homework, this is homework.
Yeah, yeah, what is here is, what is here are the, the, the results of the survey and revisions to three sections, so it's not a new report. Take your time as you need to review it, but it, it has been around for a while. That's all I want to say.
That's what I thought, so, so the question, again, it falls back on council. We have a motion to table it, made by Councilwoman Shafi, seconded by Councilwoman Martin. Uh, with that, that's still, that's still out there, but what he's telling us is, and I, this is the document that we, we, we turned the screws on them.
Right, right.
But it's documented, and it, and it, and then it took them, and then it, so I'm with you on it, but then it, then it, the, the amount of time that now I understand why we're seeing it now, because what we asked you was a whole lot.
That's right.
We asked you a whole lot, and so this is the finished result, okay, I see. Now, Madam Proton, I see your hand is up.
Yeah. Does Vision Zero include solar street lights?
No, it does not. So, this Vision Zero is a goal by the US Department of Transportation to have zero fatalities. It's not necessarily tied to streetlights. Street lighting is, is a separate deal. Yes, we have streetlights in the right of way, but this particular report is about pedestrians, traffic flow, it's not about public lighting.
Public is dark, okay.
I, I understa, I understand what you're saying, I'm just telling you what, what this, what this is. So I'm not disagreeing that streetlights are a part of safety, and I, I agree with that a hundred percent. But this is about roads and fatalities and those types of things.
So I would, I'm just gonna interject here, I, I would, I would like to see this, there's a motion on the floor, but, and, and rarely do I I'm, I'm, I'm the chair, I'm just running the meeting. I would like to see this voted on tonight, because when I go back and I think about it, as I find a space in my brain for it, we really and, and this is just the, the comprehensive safety action plan, it's something that every city needs to have. It's not a new, it, correct me if I'm wrong, this is not, you didn't conjure this up, this is, there's been some iteration of this here in the past, am I correct?
Yes, that is true.
Okay, so, so with that being said, and knowing that we went back, those meetings are more clear in my mind right now. This is the homework that we asked them to do, and it's here in front of us, and if we decide to table it, I'm. Yep, I, and I'm, I'm completely good with that, but what I don't want to do is, I don't like to, with our limited staff, I don't like to slam our people with deadlines. I'm somebody who has to face deadlines on a regular basis, and when it's, when the sweat is beating down on your forehead, it's not a good thing, so if we did decide to table it tonight, uh, that's fine, but we should be voting, we should be voting on this today, go ahead. Uh, Ms. Manica, we're still doing discussion, man.
Council President?
Uh, Ms. Manica had her hand up, let me, Ms. Ms. Manica, go ahead.
All right. Could you just go through what the changes are?
Thank you, yes, I can. So, um, so there was revisions to three sections, okay? And the, the first, um, section was five point one, and that was a public survey. So that was adding the additional results that we received from the fifty-two responses. There were three, uh, key issues identified. The residents said they feel unsafe on the streets, particularly residents without cars. To, uh, Proton's, uh, point, lack of lighting, poorly maintained roads. Then we provided, uh, the solutions to that would be obviously more street lighting, improved road sign striping were highly favored. Other, other solutions, improved sidewalks and crosswalks, better bike lanes, more road safety education or community gatherings. That, those were revisions that came specifically from the responses from the residents and were added into section five point one. So that means when we are here in the fall, we did not have that, we only had nine results. We had, went from nine to fifty-two, so people got involved, and that's what they said. Section five point two was equity considerations. This was a requested change from the US Department, so between September of last year and the spring of this year, we had to submit that, they issued some comments, so we had to incorporate the US Department of Transportation's comments as well. That was, um, making sure that, um, race, gender, age, and income were included in, in what, uh, information that we were sharing there. They wanted to make sure that the, uh, the vulnerabilities of each group were addressed in the report. The other, the other section was four point six, which is pedestrians involved in car crash data analysis. They asked us to do a deeper dive into that. Only two percent of all crashes involve pedestrians, but those are my, more likely to be fatal and incapacitating. So those, one was the residents, two came from the US Department of Transportation. Just to kind of, uh, walk back a little bit, um, Puritan and Hamilton, when we are counseling the fall, was an issue. The offset of that, also pilgrim offsets. Um, I think there's a recommendation from Councilwoman Martin, can, what can be done about that? So we added some, um, information regarding roundabouts, tho, both, because they're both offset would be in order to get them, uh, aligned, a roundabout would be a good solution for either one of those two roads, so that is in, uh, the proposed improvements. The, uh, talking about, um, there have been lots of conversation with this council and councils before about speed bumps, people speeding through, uh, through the residential areas. We added some information about, um, adding speed bumps. In the, in the September report, there was an exhibit that was incorrect on page forty-four for one of the solar streetlights, it, it referenced it on Hamilton, it's actually on Victor, so we made that change. Okay. I think that, I think that kind of, that most likely some summarizes the changes that, that we had. It is, it is, um, to Councilman Shafi's, I mean, it is, it is a lot of pages, almost sixty pages of information.
Yes.
Um, I would add that if you approve this this evening, what that does is allows us to submit this to the US Department of Transportation and gets us, uh, better positioning for, uh, grant funding in the future. This is a, this is a, a living, breathing, um, document. I mean, just because you take action tonight or a meeting in the future, does not mean that, uh, we will not continue to receive comments. I mean, a lot of the conversation's been about infrastructure and water, uh, but recently, we've been getting a lot of feedback on roads. And now that some of those infrastructure improvements have been made since eighteen, we can start to focus on the road, so you know, safety, safety is a big thing, and, um, you know, we, this is not the end of the conversation. So that, that's all I'll say on what you have here before.
Okay, haven't heard that, Mr. Shafi, um, haven't heard that.
Right.
If you still.
I, I, I have no problem with any of the changes. I do remember that we have gone through this before, but as Mr. Damon pointed out, I got it on Thursday, I need a little bit more time to go through.
Done, okay, so, so.
Sixteenth is not gonna hurt us.
No, it's not, so we, but, before you go forward, Ms. Martin, so we have a motion on the floor to, to table this until the next meeting, that will allow us to dig in deeper. You supported that motion, I would like to call the roll on it and move this off of our, our ta, our table, so that we can dig into with those of us who have concerns.
So we take it off the table, we're taking it, once we take it off the table, we're taking off the table to vote on it, right?
No, ma'am, we're gonna, we're gonna ta, I'm sorry, we're gonna table it today, and then we'll be. No ma'am, we're gonna, we're gonna ta- I'm sorry, we're gonna table it today, and then we'll be voting at the next meeting.
Right, so I have questions.
So go ahead, ma'am, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure that I, I, I wanted to clarify the motion made by Mr. Ashafi. Go ahead, please.
Okay, so I just have question forty, on page forty-one. And I noticed it talks about, um, roundabouts. It says least important, slightly important. Can you tell me just about that, that column going straight through, or actually that row, I mean? Is it saying that it's very important or least important for the roundabout, that forty-four percent? See what I'm talking about?
I do, yeah, it's the first, uh, row, right?
Right, the forty-four, the four, the nineteen, the thirty.
Going left to right, you, you reading left to right, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Can you just give me a brief descri- no worries, okay, no worries.
No, I mean, I, I'm trying to,
No worries, no, we're gonna move forward, no worries. Cause I'm really trying to raise the sun.
Okay.
What is a blue light partner, what is that exactly?
What, what, what page are you on?
Page forty-eight.
So, um, so the blue part, blue light partner is just adding, uh, the safety component to, to the roads. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's what,
Does that mean there's cam- there'll be cameras?
No, just the blue light. It was kind of, it was what was kind of discussed earlier.
Okay, my last question, page fifty-one, is that what the roundabout is gonna look like?
No, so they, absolutely not. That's, they, they're calling that, uh, kind of a circle road, but the roundabout would be, um, it would not look like that at all. That's just a circle in the middle of the road, right? We have to have, uh, tapers that come into it and facilitate traffic around. It could be one, it could be double, but it would not be that. That's a, that's a, a nice rendering, but that is not, that, but that's not what we would propose at all.
All right, no more questions, Mr. President.
All right, so we'll go ahead and call to roll on tabling item eight. Um, if you, if you so kind, ma'am, uh, Deputy Clerk.
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes, to table.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
No.
No.
Council Protem Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
It's all, it's gonna pass, but I want to say no, because I'd like to vote on it tonight. So if, if motion carries, it'll be tabled to the next meeting.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item nine underwater, thank you, sir. Uh, no, don't go nowhere.
Oh, I'm not.
On the item nine underwater resolution requesting the authorization. Let me make a key point here. This is just requesting authorization for the City of Highland Park Water Par- the Water Department in coordination with the Highland Park Police Department. I'm sorry, Department of, uh, Public Works to prepare a vulnerability assessment. It's, it's a vulnerability assessment. How vulnerable are we for the Highland Park Water Treatment Plant? Again, this is item nine underwater. A resolution requesting authorization only for the City of Highland Park Water Department in coordination with the City of Highland Park Department of Public Works to prepare a vulnerability assessment for the Highland Park Water Treatment Plant. City Council, what's your pleasure on item nine? We have a motion for approval with, by Councilman Ashafi with questions, support. Chair offers support, Mr. Ashafi, go for your questions.
Okay, um, could you explain it a little bit for the public so they understand?
Absolutely. So, uh, many of you know that the plant has been down since twenty twelve, so we're, uh, approaching the thirteenth year. Um, and because of how the plant shut down, it was not able to be com- commissioned like it should. It was kind of pencils down, and one day it was open, the next day it was not. That's, you know, if you were going to, um, decommission a plant or temporary put it out of service, you would have gone through a plan and have series of things that would happen. Actually, securing the premises would be one of them. Um, evaluating the, the age of the equipment, that, all of those things, that did not happen. So over the last decade plus, all types of things, uh, not very positive have been happening over there. Uh, graffiti, uh, fences being broken into, the building broken into. So, um, after the last couple of things that happened, uh, you know, we said, we've got to get that. It's, it's, it's an asset, we have to get it secured properly, so that we don't continue to have things happen, um, trespassing, vandalism. And so the vulnerability study is, um, you put together a, a, a study that goes through a series of recommendations. I mean, there's been some welding done, but was it the right material? Was it in the right locations? You know, are you looking at it from maybe how someone on the outside may look at it? So, uh, the purpose is, is to hire someone, put together a report. We would bring that report to council to review, go through the findings there, and then see what the next steps are. The next steps would probably be moving to construction and, and doing whatever is it within the report. Um, some of the things in our screening call talked about, um, you know, getting power to the, to the site so we can have some surveillance, um, securing the right locations the right way. Um, so there's a number of things that were brought to our attention. I said, well, I gotta bring it to council and see what your pleasure was. So that is, that is what this is, is probably well, well, long overdue. Um, I'm excited to be able to hear and talk to you about it tonight.
Is, is, is there a predicted cost for that?
Oh, for the, for the report?
Yeah.
It's seven thousand dollars.
Seven thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm, forty-five days for them, that they come here, meet with us, meet with DPW, meet with the police department, um, you know, kind of get the history and go through, um, a number of different things, so that what they write actually, um, serves everybody.
So are they wanting to go through the plan?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so, um, I'm requesting of you now, since they're gonna go through the plan, I've been waiting to get into there for a minute and take a look at it, I'd like to tag along. If that's possible.
Okay.
I think, since they're gonna go through it anyway, it'd be a prime opportunity for me to get a look.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, um, all right, go ahead, Ms. Martin. After you, we'll go ahead and take the role.
Okay.
Unless we have other questions. Go ahead, ma'am.
Um, so they're just doing a report?
Yes.
So they're opposite of the elite security services?
Wha- what are you looking at, uh, the?
Right here.
Yeah, okay.
The main consultant.
So,
Yeah, no, they're not part?
N- no, so, um,
So?
The, the gentleman who owns the company has a, uh, security background, and he's, uh, ex-FBI person. So that's, that's what you're looking at. It's not, it's not to have, you know, surveillance of someone out there twenty-four seven. That's just, this is just kind of his, his, uh, his resume.
Okay, he's showing his credentials.
Yes.
Okay.
No.
I was wondering why we need a SWAT tactical team over there at the Water Department?
We probably do need one.
Undercover operations. What are we doing at the water plant?
You'd be surprised.
What's really going on there?
Okay.
Okay. I'm done, Mr. President.
So let's go ahead and take the role on item nine underwater resolution requesting authorization, uh, to conduct a vulnerability assessment. Um, would you please call to roll?
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Protem Robinson.
No.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, thank you, sir. So I'm gonna set this to affirm two minutes. And we will, let me check online first, I'm gonna start to do the people online. First, if I could, because they will be here with their hands up, waiting for me. So for the attendees who are watching online, I am looking at the roster right now. I don't see any hands. All right. Ms. Martin would like to go home before the sun sets.
We're in a race, we're in a race.
So ladies and gentlemen, I don't see anybody walking towards that podium. Once you state your name, I'll start your two minutes.
Hello, Carla Oliver. I'm up here for a specific reason, and that is in regards to the violation ordinance for the rental properties. Um, this really concerns me, because this ordinance currently is repealed. And because it's repealed, you cannot enforce a ordinance that's repealed. So that concerns me from the standpoint of people that are enforcing it, administration, the coun- uh, counseling with the lawyers in regards to this.
There's only, Attorney, ma'am, it's not repealed, we only have, we, the dis- this, I think a motion was made by Mr. Ashafi, I'm gonna pause your time.
Yeah.
The motion was made by Mr. Ashafi for a moratorium, so it's not repealed. That, this council decided as of the day it was voted on, that there will be no enforcement until we can adjust the ordinance. At least, let me pause, I'm gonna let you resume your time, go right ahead.
Yeah, so technically, this was already looked at in the ordinance back in February, and it was technically repealed. It's not there. Um, and it states that it's repealed, so which, which was my concern and confusion as to what the moratorium was, the last meeting. So I'm unclear as to how it's been authorized to allow any letters, any judgments, any forcing or strong hands of inspection for any of the residents with it already being repealed.
When was it repealed?
This was back it later on, I want to say.
Five of us would have had to repeal it.
Yeah, no, it was already in the documents, in the ordinance as a repeal, prior to you guys. So I think that needs to be everybody's tickets and letters and everything needs to be retracted until this ordinance goes through, which I also will fight, because it's, it violates my Fourth Amendment right. But that's it. But again, my concern is the ability to be able to enforce this by administration and everyone else without looking at the records. And, and it's clear that it has been repealed before this new administration was even in office. So that's it.
Hello. Hi, my name is Deborah Scott, and I am the grateful daughter of the gracious Wayne County Commissioner Martha G. Scott. And I just want to say, Council, thank you so much. You just don't know, and you just don't understand. Ever since I was fourteen years old, I'm sixty-seven today, and proud that I have been walking, serving and helping my mother with not only the City of Highland Park, but a portion of the east side of Detroit, along with Hamtramck. That has been her main base. She has been a civil service commissioner all the way to back of Wayne County Commissioner, the mayor, State Representative. So I know she's still living, but let's give her her flowers that she so much deserves. She's, all she really, 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 I swear to you all, all she really cares about is the City of Highland Park, her citizen. She cares about the citizens. Not to say she doesn't care about her citizens, um, in Detroit and Hamtramck, but she loves her citizens of Highland Park, of which she lived till she was seven years old. Now do the math, and you'll understand that this woman, she needs this. Now do me a favor, everybody listening, please do not say a word to her, she knows nothing about this. No, no, I made sure, I got her busy, I made sure she wasn't gonna be here for this. Pro Tem, I thank you ever so much, Derek Hale, for helping me put this together. You presented it, you helped put it together, Derek. And I thank you, the citizens, for allowing my mother to have her flowers while she's still here.
Uh, good evening, Council. Uh, my name's Derek Hale, I'm legislative aide to, uh, Commissioner Martha G. Scott. But I also serve a dual role. I'm, I served in the legislature with, uh, with the Commissioner, and I'm also one of her sons. But I'm gonna get emotional. Every day when we go to work, and we try to deal with things, and we try to help, we don't try, we do, we help everybody out that we can. The Commissioner bleeds Highland Park.
Yes, yes, yes.
Anytime there's something that's going on, um, in the city, she's trying to figure out a way to alleviate the pain of the citizens. When we were going through the water crisis, you know, about a couple of months ago, she was trying to find ways to get money and water for the residents of the City of Highland Park. I just don't know a woman, a mother, grandmother, a great-grandmother that works hard for this city.
Yeah.
And I just can't thank you enough for allowing this to take place tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, I'm Cheryl Henry, I'm from Christ Harbor Fellowship, and I would just like to say thank you. I want to dittle with, uh, Martha Scott, and with us knowing her as well as we do, and Bishop Evans being a partner with her. But I'm on, standing here on behalf of Bishop Evans, thanking you guys for bringing the resolution forward. As we know, Bishop is up in age as well, and we just want to, as a ministry and as a community, to just to show our love and, and, and support of him, and the passion that he has for the community and all that he's done. So I thank you for taking in the consideration and making the resolution and making this happen for us this year. We have been, I've been active with this since twenty sixteen after a stroke. Um, it just was given to me to do, and I have been working at this since twenty sixteen with you guys. And I just thank you that it's coming to fruition this year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
By the next council.
Thank you.
Again, Robert Douglas Lars Jr. Uh, good evening to this esteemed Council and to the great citizens of our city, Highland Park. Uh, what wonderful council meeting we have had. Uh, I want to thank, to be thankful and to thank Council President Thomas for answering one of my questions after three months of asking. And I want to ask, to allow me to address the elephant, one of the elephants in the city. And may say it, the elephant in the room. Uh, I want to take this time to acknowledge Councilman Kershey on warning us of the possibility and the danger of Highland Park, Highland Park being turned into a city full of parking lots. And our example sits on Beersford as I speak, between Woodward and John R. I also want to thank Director Clyburn on giving me an answer to a question I have been asking again for three months. And at every planning commission meeting, the answer I received was that everything that goes before the planning commission, whether it was a, whatever entity it was, a business organization, that after the planning commissioners give their recommendation, everything comes before this council. But when I spoke with Director Clyburn on Thursday, he said that is not so. That there are some things that does not go before this council. And my concern is, if I've asked this question and received different answers, because on last, on last Wednesday, I asked one of the council members the question, their answer was, I don't know. I asked one of the commissioners the same question, their answer was, I don't know. So my concern is, if the council don't know, if the commissioners don't know, then how can the citizens know? Cause these are the individuals we expect to know. And so thank you for addressing the problem of the lack of communication that we are experiencing. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Kristi Durr, and I'm a resident of Highland Park. Uh, good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, I just want to say something. Um, I don't know if you guys remember that you guys work for us, the residents of Highland Park. So I'm gonna con- I just want to condemn any slighted stares while the residents get up here and speak, because, um, that's what, I'm, I'm feeling the energy, and you guys work for us. And, um, if you guys feel like you're above us, then you probably should step down and, um, let somebody else who loves their job take your seat. Um, my second question, well, my question is, um, the Water Department inspection that was that you guys gave to the last part, is that, well, not inspection, I'm sorry, is that an inspection for, of the water park, Water Department, um, Water Treatment Center's infrastructure? Yes. Okay, well, I'm gonna ask that, uh, Councilman Ashafi said it, that he wants to take a walkthrough with it. Um, can that be available to the citizens of Highland Park as well?
I'm not even sure if it's gonna shop, you can do it for safety concerns, ma'am.
We're not even sure if Mr. Ashafi can do it for safety concerns, ma'am. Forgive me, Fenero. We're not even sure he can do it.
Okay. Oh, okay. Well, there was a video back in April that was circulating and a Good Samaritan who was shaking, checking the safety and the, uh, infrastructure, I guess, of all abandoned buildings, put out a, a video of water running in the water department, the water treatment center, I'm sorry. And Eagle was called and word on the street is that Eagle said, Eagle got a report that there was no water running in that treatment facility. And, um, and, um, if it is running, then that would affect the citizens greatly in multiple ways, um, with water runoff, mold and possibly, um, infra- lead and it would affect the, the, the bills of the Highland Park residents. So I'm just asking for an inspection if that's not happening and I would like the city council or other people to be available for that or video if we can attend.
That's your two minutes, ma'am. Forgive my interruption. All right, so we'll move into council affairs, starting with you, Mr. Ashafi.
Council President, it, it has been such a lovely night, such, such wonderful and amazing things have happened. I have no comments tonight. I will not ruin this night.
Thank you so much, sir. Ms. Martin?
You know, I can't, I, I, I agree with that. Um, so I'm going to say Charmaine, Derek and Deborah, you guys have my eyes leaking today. I really don't like when my eyes leak. Um, I just want to say I am so excited about the, um, you know, Martha G. Scott and her, you know, street being named after her. That is so exciting. I kind of remember when, well, not kind of, I remember, um, just being out in the community and some of the things, the events I was doing. And I remember everybody was coming to me and was like, you need to talk to Martha G. Scott. And I hadn't realized how much of the community she had touched until I kept hearing it weeks and months. And, and I remember I reached out to her office and she called me herself. You know, and it, that is amazing. And I say that because I have called other officials and they didn't call me themselves. Martha G. Scott was literally on the phone. I was walking to the store. And I remember she called me and she was like, yeah, you can meet with me at, uh, Main Street. We got breakfast and everything like that. And I was so excited about being on the phone with Martha G. Scott that I forgot to ask her what time. Got to ask her what time. She was like, I'll meet you there. And I was like, all right, click. And I was like, I don't even know the time. So I called Main Street and Main Street was like, she's going to be there at 11:00. I said, okay. Got there the first day at 11:00. When I went into Main Street, they was like, you missed her. She's come and left. I was like, ah, let me eat here anyway. So I sat down there, ate and I was like, second time I'm going to catch her. And so I asked somebody else. I was like, I'm trying to catch Martha G. Scott at Main Street. And somebody else told me, you need to be there at, I think they said, no, they didn't say eight. They said six in the morning. Got there six in the morning and they were like, no. You too early. Missed her the second day. And then the third day, I was like, you know what? I'm going to call her office again and I'm going to lock in a time. They told me they're going to mail me a calendar because it's on her calendars. So I will never miss her being there at Main Street. And when I went to Main Street, I was so starstruck just hearing the history. I thought she had only been the mayor. I thought she went from mayor to commissioner until she told me her whole story. And her story was so captivating because in the era that she was running, she was like, you don't want to hear about me. I'm the girl. I already ate my oatmeal, so I don't even have to eat. I want to listen to everything you were telling me. And it was, she's amazing. I see why the community loves her. So this, having a street named after her, there's so much that she has done that I've heard about from people and her, her own story. So I just want to say that is amazing that, and I'm shocked that she don't even know about it. I'm shocked she, what is, I'm shocked she don't even know. I think she might know that. You know how a mother knows, like, no? I think she might know, Deborah. She might know. She doesn't know? You want to catch her on camera because I think she knows. You know how mom be like, don't tell mom. Oh, mom, no. Mom, no. With that being said.
Sun is calling.
Oh, yep, we were trying to beat the sun. So I'm going to keep it moving. Um, I'm just going to say, um, the graffiti and the, um, rental ordinance, can we do two different workshops, Mr. President? Is that possible? Okay, great. Um, moving right along, you guys know, oh, the street sweeping. Since there was no bids, does that mean, what does that mean now? Okay, thank you. And then the last thing I'm going to always, um, the Boys and Girls Club, you guys have a space that you want to rent. They let me know that it's Monday through Friday. They'll do weekends. They'll do it as early as seven in the morning to as late as 11 o'clock at night. And on that note, I always want to say thank you, everybody, for coming in and being here. Appreciate you so much. And I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Manica.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, first I had a question just to put out there for Mr. Burgess or DPW. Did we purchase the lawnmower? Um, but then past that, I just want to say thank you to the Justice Center for allowing us to use it. Us being myself, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated and our partners Focus Hope on a community baby shower and resource fair this past week. It has grown and grown and it's getting better every time. Um, it was real thanks to all the vendors that showed up from the Health Department, Detroit Arc, uh, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, Breastfeeding, Black, uh, Breastfeeding Mothers Association. I could go on, but there was a number of vendors there, even financial counseling. Uh, so that was a very successful event. Um, I've been doing that event with them now for four years. Looking forward, I want you guys to look forward to the Community Assistance Days coming up. One in August at Faith Tabernacle and another one October at New Mouth, New Mount Mariah Baptist Church, which is on, uh, Buna Vista. Faith Tabernacle, you know, is on Hamilton. In June, they are having a prayer walk, 10:00 AM at Faith Tabernacle with the Generated Young Adult Movement. That is happening, um, also with Faith Tabernacle. Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is also offering diaper assistance. Diaper assistance to receive free diapers. You qualify, of course, with some different things such as getting food stamps, uh, Medicaid, and there's a few other, um, eligibility things that will continue until they run out of diapers. So if you know anyone, let them know. Also, June 6th, there will be a daddy-daughter dance at Barber, uh, Preparatory School from 5:00 to 6:30. Those tickets are $25. And for additional daughters, so maybe you have more than one daughter, it's just another $10. I also want to say congratulations to Mrs. Martha G. Scott, Commissioner, Mayor, just everything. So if you think you learned something, I've been knowing her since I was a kid. And so she's been helpful to residents way before she even became mayor. Uh, delivering food, toys, clothes during Christmas time. And so, uh, I actually worked, got a chance to work with her and Deborah on different, uh, events, pancake breakfast. And just to, just hang around her, you learn a lot. So she is well deserved. And I do agree that we should give our flowers while we are still here. Uh, so again, she is well deserving of it. Very awesome, awesome lady. And to everyone, have a great night. Uh, thank you for coming.
Madam Proton, please.
Good evening, everybody. Want to say hello to my pastor, all my friends, Sister Joyce. About a week and a half ago, I received some flyers in regards to some solar lights being placed on Florence and Louise Street by solidarity, by whoever. And, um, don't get me wrong, I've been knowing Miss Shamika for over 10 years now. I was one of the very first board members. And we together put a lot of this stuff together with Lisa and her husband doing the feasibility stuff. So I want the whole entire city of Highland Park to be lit. But there's a process that has to be done. Because if I wouldn't have received the flyer, I wouldn't have known that the light was getting put in because shouldn't I have paid to council? I don't know who's going to answer that question because I've been emailing everybody for a week and a half and I haven't gotten any answers. And, um, I love y'all and that's it. See you later.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Uh, let me remind everybody in the audience that the five of us are just regular people breathing in and out. I'm on, if you will allow me, Ms. Manica's taking care of her mother. Ms. Martin's taking care of her kids. She had to go pick up on her kids today. And so Ashafi would just like to live his private life without being antagonized. Pro Tem Robinson has a sick grandchild from time to time. She's dealing with that. And for me, tomorrow is my daughter's graduation. So, yeah, the daughter that I buried in January, I've been, I'm up, I'm up here. I went to school and I worked as a high school teacher today and I clapped out the seniors for the class of 2025 and I stood there with a dry face and I hugged those babies knowing that I put my daughter in the ground. And I came here tonight when I didn't want to come here because my whole house is crying right now because we got to get up and go, get dressed tomorrow and go to graduation and carry my daughter's cap and gown on a tray. So when somebody tells me that you don't like the look on my face, you forget that I'm human. You forget that I'm human. Y'all cried tonight over people who are alive. You cried tonight over people who are alive, but looked at me with scorn as I'm sitting here trying to hold myself together because I put my 16-year-old daughter in the ground. We are regular people. We're just humans. We just got some votes on a piece of paper. So while you're thinking that somehow we're elevated, we're only elevated in these chairs, we're regular folk. I could walk to my house right now. So while we sit in these chairs and deliberate and take the responsibility of the whole community on our back, they pay us less than $5 an hour for the time that we spend. None of us get off work from being city council members. We can't have a private moment without being city council members while the rest of you get to get off your jobs. None of us get to be private citizens anymore and we're just regular folk. So as you sit in that audience and you judge us, remember, I didn't jump into my pants today. I pulled them on one leg at a time. And I got a family just like you and tonight we are swimming in a lake of tears because our baby is not here. So don't look up here and judge us. Don't look up here and judge us. Excuse me, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? 8:28.